I'd like to call this January 17th meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson here. Councilman Shelton. Mayor Salee.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis, present. Councilman Williams.
Present.
Four present, one absent.
Thank you, Kathy. If we could all rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Shipley, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No changes.
No changes. Seeing no changes, can we get a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Four ayes votes, motion carries.
Brings us to our consent agenda. We have items two, three, four, five, and six. Item two is set a date for a public hearing on ordinance 080202 relative to stream buffer zones. Item three, consider awarding bids for glass recycling containers, carts, and dumpsters. Item four is consider awarding bids for transformers and luminaires. Item five, consider awarding bids for PVC pipe, copper tubing, and valves, and et cetera, water control, water quality control department. Item six, consider awarding bid for full catered meal and service for father-daughter date night. Do we have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council on that? Any items we need to pull off there? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Four ayes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to the old business portion of our meeting. Item seven, consider approval of council minute, excuse me, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held January the 3rd, 2008. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move approval. Second.
Have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Four ayes votes, motion carries.
Item eight, consider on second and final reading ordinance 071236 rezoning 433 Prophet Street from RS 5, single-family residential, to CN Neighborhood Commercial, sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the property under considerations depicted on the screen, aerial view of it, and the current zoning. The proposed rezoning was approved by the Planning Commission subject to the submitted and approval of a subdivision plan combining parcels five and six on tax map 53K group H, and is recommended by the planning department. We've received no calls or comments since first reading.
Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no comments, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Four ayes votes, motion carries.
That brings us to the new business. Item nine, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 071237 closure and abandonment of a portion of the undeveloped right-of-way of Park Street located between 1826 and 1848 Burn Avenue, sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, Mr. Robin Meadows, on behalf of property owner John Mark Phipps, submitted the request that a portion of the undeveloped right-of-way of Park Street be closed and abandoned and made available for purchase to the joining property owner, which is Mr. Phipps. The Park Street undeveloped right-of-way is located between Burn Avenue and Lee Avenue, south of West Jerry Woodson Road. The portion of the right-of-way requested for closure and abandonment extends approximately 174 feet west of Burn Avenue to an alley. Based on a survey submitted by Mr. Meadows, the right-of-way has a width of approximately 35 feet. The survey also indicates that a single-family structure is partially located within the right-of-way, as just shown on the screen there. Two properties that are owned by Mr. Phipps are these two tracks, this track and this track. The procedure for closure and abandonment of rights-of-way within the city of Cookeville are specified in Title 16, Chapter 4 of our municipal code, and there are several steps that have to go through and which have been gone through in this process. The applicable city departments have reviewed the closure and abandonment request and have determined there are no utilities located within this right-of-way. As requested by the mayor and city council, the planning commission or the planning department provided notification regarding the proposed closure and abandonment to all property owners located, which are contiguous with the undeveloped right-of-way from Burn Avenue to North Willow Avenue. There's an aerial view. Here's the map, or excuse me, here's the letter that was sent out on January 4th notifying all property owners along the entire length of the right-of-way about their proposed closure request, inviting them to attend tonight's meeting, and in alternative, if they couldn't attend tonight's meeting, that they could contact the planning department by phone or by letter. Here's a list of the property owners that were notified by the planning department. There are 12 parcels owned by 10 different people along the right-of-way. The only comments received by the planning department were from Michael Barnes, the owner of the property at 1830 North Whitney Avenue, and his only comment was to inquire as to why he was being re-notified. The proposed closure and abandonment was approved by the planning commission, subject compliance with Title 16, Chapter 4, and the planning department concurs with this recommendation.
We have a motion and a second to approve.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? I would just like to say I certainly appreciate your extra effort that we went ahead and did that.
Glad to do it.
Thank you. It's very thorough.
Sorry we had to have extra information.
We appreciate that. Any further comments by the council? Seeing no comments, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Four ayes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Mills, item 10, consider resolution 080103, supporting and endorsing the Cookeville-Putnam Chamber of Commerce's local retirement community recruitment effort for the American Association of Retirement Communities' seal of approval, sponsor Mr. Jim Shipley.
George, were you in LA in 11?
Labor lights.
Well, this resolution says that the city of Cookeville ensures support of and endorses retiree recruitment efforts of the Cookeville-Putnam County Chamber of Commerce, and applauds their recognition by the American Association of Retirement Communities and their goal of receiving the seal of approval designation. Well, if I, I told you, you gotta come up to the, oh yeah.
Come to one of the lectures here.
I wasn't prepared. I was told you were gonna do this.
We are applying the Chamber, Cookeville-Putnam County is one of the 10 pilot communities for retired Tennessee, and we're getting a lot of mileage out of that, and we're able to go to trade shows, to recruit retirees. The average age of retirees that we're recruiting is 56. We've got, as many of you well know, there's lots of 45-year-old retirees in this community. If you haven't met them, they're here, let me tell you. The seal of approval is sort of kinda like the, all of you ladies will know this, is sort of kinda like the good housekeeping seal of approval. You men may not know it, but some of you ladies do. And that's what the American Association of Retirement Communities, so that's what we're going after, we will be, and a seal of approval community. So that's what we're wanting to do. We're seeing lots of retirees. Last year, let me just give you a few statistics if I may. Last year, we received over 5,000 requests from retirees for information. We responded to each and every one. That was by letter, by email, trade show, whatever. We had, we responded all of those. We had, oh, I forget, over 42,000 unique visitors to our website last year. And of course, that related to over 2 million hits on the website. But we're talking to retirees every day. They're calling the office, they're emailing us, and they're coming here, and I'm sure you're seeing a lot of them. Is that enough, Jim?
That's got plenty.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved. Second.
Our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Four ayes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley and Ms. Duncan. Item 11, consider resolution 080104, requesting that the city's state legislators sponsor and support an amendment to TCA 13-7-208 clarifying the definition of off-site signs, sponsor Mr. Jim Shipley.
Section 13-7-208 of Tennessee Code currently has a definition of an off-site sign that could be interpreted to include small directional signs that are not owned by a person or entity that's in the business of selling advertising space on that sign. What we are requesting the legislature to do is to change that definition to make it much clearer as to what basically a billboard or an off-premise sign is. And this amendment would define those off-premise signs as any sign owned and operated by a person or other entity in the business of selling advertising space. I couldn't get all of the stuff on that one slide. Says "advertising space" on that sign that advertises or gives direction to any business, product, service, attraction, or any other purpose or interest other than the industrial, commercial, or other business establishment located on the site where the sign is located." And I would recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, no further comments from the council? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Four ayes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. It brings us to item 12, consider resolution 080105, requesting that the city's state legislators sponsor and support an amendment to TCA 13-4-101 regarding appointment of planning commission members, sponsor Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, this has really been an issue that's been on the mind of several councils. State law currently provides that the mayor appoints the members to the planning commission. And through discussion with previous councils and this council, there was a lot of interest in being exempted from that requirement of state law to allow the total city council, the whole city council, to make those appointments. And that's what this resolution is asking the legislature to do. And I would recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Move approval. Second.
Have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
I would just like to make a short comment. Having sat in the mayor position in the past, I can understand the pressure that has been, that's placed upon that one person to make those appointments. And it is, I think, with the type of government that we have, it will flow much better if we can have council appointments, and that makes it more like we make other decisions within this body. So I would concur that this would be a good move to make so that we all may share in that appointment procedure. It was a little difficult sometimes if I had to sit in that position and make that appointment myself, and so I, as a result, I ended up asking other, the other four council members their opinion of certain individuals that I was thinking of in making appointments. So we, I ended up doing that anyway, including the other four, so I would recommend that we pass this item.
Any other comments? I have a few comments I'd like to make about it. Having served as a council member and then also now as mayor, it's really pretty easy for me to see both sides of this issue. When, during the last election, I had a lot of the local people coming to me, asking me about my stance on zonings, and they had kind of remembered my voting on trying to protect single-family residential areas, and that it was important to them because they knew that the mayor appointed people to the planning commission, that it was important to them that they tried to make me become the mayor, so that I would have that power to put these people on the planning commission that would be more like-minded like me to protect those single-family areas. Now, the way I see it is that most, all changes that come from the planning commission, and having sat on the planning commission, all of the changes that affect the zoning and those kinds of things have to be ratified by a majority vote of the city council. So right now, there, to me, seems like with a mayor appointment to the planning commission and the city council having to vote to ratify those decisions, there's a checks and balances in how those things happen. If we have a majority on the council that appoints the planning commission, that same majority can ratify the things that the planning commission sends, and to me, that eliminates the checks and balances of that system. Now, on the flip side, had I not been elected mayor and not had those appointments, and we would've had a, say, you know, somebody that was a rogue mayor that could've, you know, I don't know, what issue. But again, there's, we would've, you know, maybe I would've felt a little different about it and maybe would've wanted to had a voting privilege towards appointing these people to this planning commission, but, so I really can kind of see both sides of this, and I don't really feel very strongly either way on it. I do feel a little bit uneasy about the fact that the people who were concerned about that prior to the election and sort of had expectations of kind of a longstanding tradition of how those members were put on that planning commission are now midterm gonna have that changed. So, you know, it would be my recommendation that maybe this could wait, and, you know, I can support this, that it begin at the next council, so that we don't have to, so that people have time to realize that their mayor is not gonna be the one that appoints the members to the planning commission, because really, it's the only single thing that the mayor, as far as I know, other than, I mean, I can marry people, which I'm not advertising that, please, but it's really the only other power that the mayor has as an elected official. And again, everything has to be ratified by the city council. So, you know, I think we have a fantastic planning commission. Councilman Williams sits on there, and I think everybody does a great job. I guess my feeling is if it's not broken, why fix it? So I don't think I'm gonna be able to support this resolution at this time.
Interesting part about what I've learned in being a city councilman for the last year and a half is how much this is a team decision-type atmosphere. You know, when we're in a consensus-building environment and we don't have districts or wards, we have a mayor that we actually appoint as a group, not elected by any group of people, we appoint the mayor. I think it's interesting that this was the only thing left that was actually appointed by the mayor, and so I'm mainly in support of this resolution, only because I think it makes it a level playing field in every vestige, if you will, of how we seek to govern the citizens of Cookeville. And I think there's no question about it that Sam's not a rogue mayor, thankfully, but, and I trust his opinion, and I think that, but going forward as a city, you know, you look at things, and I think this is great for the city because it allows us to communicate openly about things. There's no surprises to other council members as to who the appointments will be, we're able to communicate those, just like we would any other decision that we make. And so how much being a planning commission member, the council's representative, and understanding Sam's side in both ways, I understand it, but I think ultimately, in the long-term interest of Cookeville, this is what we feel to be, or I feel to be, the best thing, and so for that case, I'm definitely in support of this resolution.
Well, in my background, of course, in education, is so much of it is collaborative. We work as a group towards everything, and also with this council, it's been so good to be able to work with all the other four members, and I do feel like it is a good idea to make this a decision from the governing body instead of one person, just simply because then it's more of a representation of the opinion of the people, because even though we don't have districts or wards or whatever, we do have a whole different group of people that we come in contact with. And so I'm, and yet I can also see the appointment part of it, too, of coming from a single
Jim, I think you did some surveying of other cities across the state, or TML did. What'd you find with that?
Well, it wasn't really a survey. I was at a TML district meeting, or one of those meetings, went to Nashville, where we talk about upcoming legislative issues, and I talked to, there were different committees, and I was called to a different committee to talk about this issue, and I thought it would be, everybody would have overwhelming support for what I wanted to do, but it was about half and half. A lot of the mayors did not want to give up that right, and so it's, and I don't think it's a burning issue with anybody at this point, it's just, that's one of the things that's been out there on the burner for a long time, and it did come up in our discussions, and that's why it's presented here today.
I think it's hard, too, to be able to determine which of those mayors, if you will, were elected mayors and which one were appointed mayors. I think that makes a huge, huge difference in how the appointment's done. An elected mayor that's elected to a position of mayor is a completely different form of government than the one we currently operate in, and so however it be, 50/50, I, you know, I think it'd be interesting to know that as well, but, because I guess if I were, if this were, if I were the mayor and it was an elected position, I think it would make a whole lot more sense where the majority of the citizenship that I served under did actually vote for me to be the mayor. I think it would be a little bit different. Or in this case, you voted you to be the mayor.
Any further discussion? Any comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nope.
Three ayes, one no. Motion carries.
Item 13, consider resolution 080106, requesting that the city's state legislators sponsors and support an amendment to TCA 13-7-208 regarding the cessation period for non-conforming uses, sponsor Mr. Jim Shipley.
This is asking the legislature to do, change provision in their code that I think went into effect in 2004, is that right, James? 2005?
2005, of course.
State law used to be silent about the cessation period for non-conforming uses. Before that time, from the city of Cookeville, we used six months, and I think a lot of people used six months. In other words, if you had a non-conforming use, like a mobile home park in the middle of town, and you took all of the mobile homes off of that property, you had six months to start the business again, or then, or you could not do it anymore, you had to conform to the zoning. This state law in 2005 changed that to 30 months, and I personally feel like that is way too long, and what we're asking the state legislature to do is to change that to 12 months. Probably won't pass, but we would like to ask them to do it anyway. And it, just about anybody can think about a non-conforming use somewhere that, in their neighborhood or close to where they live, that they wish it really wasn't there, and I think they would feel a lot more comfortable if they knew once that, those people went out of business, that they only had six months, only had 12 months to start again instead of 30, instead of two and a half years. And that's what this resolution will do.
Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
I'd just like to make a comment about this. I think one of the things that's interesting about non-conforming uses, I think it really protects a smaller community like ours a little bit more, because in certain areas, if we have, for instance, a school that is built in an area where there's not a school before, the amount of time, 30 months, changes a small community like ours, is, a lot can happen in 30 months around a school. A lot of changes can take place, and so by shortening this period of time, I think what it does, it allows us as a city to be able to eliminate non-conforming uses quicker so that we don't have these things. Then in bigger cities, you know, the zoning is pretty well set and takes a drastic change in things in order to be able to move, and so 30 months, in my opinion, seems normal for a city like Nashville or Memphis, or any bigger city, but in smaller communities like ours, I think this is a good way or a good method for us to be able to impact our communities as they seek to grow and evolve.
Well, I feel like 12 months, even that seems like a long period of time for me. You know, and I agree with it, though I think 12 months is fair, but 30 months, two and a half years, oh my goodness, you would get used to the business being empty or whatever, and then all of a sudden, just in the ninth hour, here it would come again, so I think 12 months is a more reasonable time, fair to the person who's in the non-conforming use, and then fair to the people around it.
Do we have any comments from the audience? Any further comments from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Four ayes votes, motion carries.
Item 14, consider resolution 080107, requesting that the city's state legislators sponsor and support an amendment to TCA 13-3-102 regarding exemption of regional planning commission appointments, sponsor Mr. Jim Shipley.
I showed it, didn't I?
It is. I'd like to sip of my coffee.
This again is asking the state legislature to exempt us from one of their new laws that they just passed in 2007, when they amended 13-3-102 to require that at least two of our members, two of the members of our planning commission live outside the city limits. That's gonna force us to remove some highly qualified, long-serving members of the planning commission, because you do it through attrition, and we have one long-serving, highly qualified member that is, his term is up, and we'd really like to reappoint him, but under this state law, we cannot. He would have to go off. It will, we think it'll create unfair and unequal representation on the planning commission because you're gonna have two people that don't live inside the city making decisions about things inside the city that, there'll be seven others from the, that live inside the city. So we think that's too much representation for people that do not live inside the city of Cookeville. Another problem will be, okay, you go out and you find two people outside the city, you get them on the planning commission, and then you deal with annexing the area that they live in. Number one, they could be a big stumbling block to that, but number two, once you annex them, then they've got, they've got to go off, or somebody's got to go off, because you gotta go out and find somebody else outside the city. So we think it's totally unnecessary and unworkable, and we're gonna ask to be exempted from that through this resolution.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council?
I certainly agree. It seems like unfair representation, and planning commission is one of the very most important committees that we have in this city, and they do such detailed, hard work, and we definitely need city citizens making those decisions for us, and so I couldn't support doing this, or I would hope, I would hope that we could get the state to exempt us or something. I couldn't support us going along with what the state has.
There was some discussion from State Representative Fincher about these people being in our urban growth area, our regional planning, and so he, his feeling, he was a little uneasy, I can't remember exactly how he put it, but basically it was these people could be affected by things that the planning by things that the planning commission voted on, but yet they don't have any representation. Jim, or James?
I'll let James handle that one.
I believe that was the intent of the law. I believe that's why they made the amendment, was that they felt like that some of these citizens didn't have a voice in planning matters inside the urban growth boundary. The urban growth boundary and the planning region are one and the same. They're the same boundary now. But the issue, and I, after we met, I met with Mr. Fincher, and I've got a map here later I can show you, but our urban growth boundary consists of about 30 square miles. We've already taken 10 square miles of that through annexation. So the problem is, that's going to get smaller and smaller, and we still have to have two people from that continually shrinking area. And it's unfair representation, because you've got two people for, and we estimate maybe 5,000 people in our entire urban growth boundary now, versus seven for 30,000 people. So it's, we believe it's unfair representation. But they do have a right, every time, everything is done in the reason, there's public hearings for any type of annexation, really other than including the area in our comprehensive plan in terms of identifying how we best see the property should develop, in terms of land use, and just identifying that as goals, the only thing that the planning commission does is review subdivisions. And our subdivision regulations versus the counties are very close. The only basic differences are a little bit difference in the paving requirement, where we require a top coat on the street, and also there has to be some minor issues in drainage in terms of concrete pipes and, versus metal, but those are basically the only differences. But, you know, I strongly encourage you that to pass this resolution, because it's vital for our planning commission to, if we lose some of the members we've got, we're going to take a major step backwards. And it takes, and I know, Mayor and Councilman, when you both can speak to this, it takes several years to get up to speed on the planning commission. If we have to completely start removing people, it's, it's going to set us back. And I think this is important legislation to get changed.
Very good. Do we have any further comments by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Shipley and Mr. Mills. Item 15, Consider Approval of Interlocal Agreement Revising the Putnam County Joint Economic and Community Development Board. Sponsor Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, the, when the Joint Economic and Community Development Board was established, 2000, I don't know, 2002, 2003, it was established with 30 members. And first few meetings we had, we had several, we would usually have 20 something people there. But the last three or four years, we were lucky to get seven or eight, maybe nine people there. What this interlocal agreement will do, the only thing it does is change that membership of 30 down to 15. And those 15 members are listed, they're the county executive, the mayor of Allgood, mayor of Baxter, Cookeville, Monterey, Cookeville city manager, the chamber CEO, director of schools, the president of tech. Notice I didn't say T-T-U either, it's just tech. Chamber president, will be two members from the city council, two members from the county commission, and a green belt property owner. And the green belt property owner is required by state law, that's why it's on there. And it's not changing anything else about the makeup of the board or any of the provisions, and I would recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council?
Mr. Shipley, how often does this group meet?
Required to meet four times a year, to meet quarterly by state law.
Okay.
And I think you're supposed to meet in each quarter too.
Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Item 16, Consider Approval of Emergency Pump Repair at Water Plant. Sponsor Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we recently experienced a step-up transformer failure on one of our high-service pumps at the water treatment facility. This left us operating with a backup high-service pump, and made it imperative that we have to transfer, the transformer repaired as soon as possible. We called in Cookeville Electric Motor to come in and do the repair and the rebuild. They've invoiced us $6,142.50, and I'd recommend approval.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council?
Ronnie, I see that we're rebuilding this motor. Is this motor going to stay in operation after the plant?
Transformer.
I mean, is it going to, is it, we still going to use it?
Yes, yes, this is at the plant, not at the intake.
Okay.
But the ones at the intake we're taking out will be brought in and can be robbed for parts for these pumps.
Okay.
Any further discussion by the council? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item 17, Consider Approval of Purchase of One Vehicle Police Department. Sponsor Chief Bob Terry.
Mayor and council, we're asking your approval to purchase one police car from a previous bid from Carlin Motor Company. The funds are coming from a burn grant. The total of it is $18,000, what the federal, what the grant is, and we're matching it with $6,000, and we'd ask your approval. Purchase price previously was $18,787.
Do we have a motion and a second?
I move.
Second. Any discussion by the council? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 18, Consider Approval of Proposal, Consider Approval of Proposal for Drink Vendor for Kane Creek Sportsplex and Gym. Sponsor Mr. Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have had a, an agreement of exclusivity with the drink vendor, with Pepsi, at Kane Creek Sportsplex since the Sportsplex opened, meaning that we sell, we purchase from them and sell only their products in the Sportsplex concessions. That agreement expired this past year. We did a request for proposal and included the Kane Creek Gymnasium. We will have concession stand there as well. We included the Kane Creek Gymnasium along with the Sportsplex in our request for proposal. And we put in that request that this would be another five-year agreement of exclusivity with that particular soft drink vendor. In exchange for that exclusivity, we asked for some considerations from them in the RFP. For example, they provide us with coolers, they provide us with scoreboards for all of our facilities, they maintain those coolers and those scoreboards, they'll provide, also provide us with wall clocks, with menu boards, with some additional items such as banners for advertising, that sort of thing, at no cost to us. We also asked them to give us prices on their drinks, and asked them to guarantee that those prices would not go up any more than 5% a year over the course of the agreement. And we also asked for some incentives, an opportunity for them to give us some incentives that would make the deal a little bit nicer for us and give them some consideration. I've done a comparison, and given you a comparison of those two. We received two proposals, one from Coke, one from Pepsi, and there is a comparison that I've given you there. Just to, to highlight some of that, both companies are providing similar, the proposals are very similar. Both companies are providing the appropriate number of coolers. Pepsi does provide us with an ice machine now. That ice machine is there. Coke does not, will not provide us with an ice machine, but we don't sell fountain drinks anymore. We sell only bottled drinks, and we can probably do without the ice machine. Coke did say that they would help us find a, a good price on a, on an ice machine if we really wanted one. They will provide scoreboards and for both softball, baseball, and for basketball and volleyball on the indoor. We did put specifications for specific type scoreboards in that RFP as a recommendation for them. The scoreboards that Pepsi has out there currently at the Sportsplex are the same scoreboards that they propose using for the next duration of their exclusive agreement, if we choose them. Coke, and those scoreboards do meet the specification that we put forth. Coke did not necessarily meet the score, the specification, but the scoreboard will work. And again, it's not a bid situation, it was a recommendation that these are the kinds of scoreboards we're looking for. The scoreboards that they propose have all the things on them that we need at the Sportsplex, and, and also in the gymnasium. They will work in, even though they are not specifically the ones that we put in there recommending that they, they bid, or they give us those particular scoreboards. Both companies will provide maintenance of equipment. I call your attention to the pricing. You'll see an asterisk next to the Coke pricing, and I did that because Coke has, has offered us down on incentives, you'll see a $4 per case rebate on carbonated soft drinks, and $3 per case rebate on all other packages that would be paid back to the city in the fourth quarter of each year. There's no caps on rebates, and there's no volume threshold. That's from the first case that we purchase, it's just paid on the back end. So I reflected that in the comparison of the price up at the top, under pricing. Pepsi also offered us a rebate of $1 per case, however, they asked for a 1,500 case threshold before that $1 rebate kicks in. And we have never reached that kind of volume, and don't really anticipate reaching that kind of volume this year. Down below you'll see the incentives. Coke offered us an incentive of $2,000 paid at the signing of the agreement. Pepsi offered us $3,000 in the first year, and $2,000 per year every year thereafter. However, Pepsi offered us a similar agreement last year, or the last time, and has not come through with all that money to date. Again, the rest of the incentives are very similar. In looking at it and comparing them, and understanding that with Coke, if we go with Coke, we get all new scoreboards, both at the Sportsplex and at the gymnasium. We're getting all new equipment. Their, their price is very similar, and, and actually better, once the rebate kicks in overall. We are recommending that we go with Coke for the next, as an exclusive agreement for the next five-year period.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council?
Just to make sure I'm reading this correctly, it appears that Coke is offering, offering a large variety of drinks, where Pepsi did not price some of those things, so...
And they don't all have exactly the same products, obviously. They have similar products. Pepsi, we listed all the prices that Pepsi gave us prices for, and in the RFP, we said we would consider all drinks that that particular vendor offered, and Coke just gave us more...
Variety.
More variety.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Any further discussion? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Mr. Woods, also I wanted to mention that I really enjoy seeing the new signs at the Drama Center.
Item 19, Consider Awarding the Following Bids. Item 19A is a one-ton cab chassis and utility service truck bed. Electric department sponsor, Mr. Tony Peake.
Mayor and council, we sealed bid and opened the one-ton cabin chassis and the utility bed. On the one-ton cabin chassis, I'd recommend Heritage Forward as a low bidder meeting specifications. On the utility bed, I would recommend String Fellow Incorporated as a low bid meeting specs. Recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Peake. Do we have a motion and a second?
I move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Peake. Item 19B, six-month paving contract, a six-month paving contract, Public Works Department. Sponsor Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently opened bids on the next six months for paving contract. Highways Incorporated with low bidder meeting specs, and I would recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Brings us to our hearing from officers, councilmen, and city manager. Looks like we've got item 20, maybe they got out of place. See, item 20, Hold a Public Hearing on Annual Progress Report of the Plan of Services for the Following Annexation Areas. Old Sparta, Old Sparta Road, Horace Lewis Road area, Old Bridge Road, Falling Water River area, Buck Mountain Road, Dry Alley Road area, Shipley Road area, East Highway 70 North, Interstate 40 area, Metheny Cora Road area, West Cookeville Interstate 40 area, O'Neill West 12th Street area, Presley West 12th Street, Shagrak Road area, God Dodson Branch Road area, and Rebecca Place, Bunker Hill Road area. Sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, as you know, since 2000, we're required to annually publish a report and hold a public hearing on the status of implementing the plans of services for areas we've annexed. There are currently 13 annexation areas in which services specified in the plan of services remain to be completed. The map on the screen depicts the location of these annexation areas. An annual report for 12 of these annexation areas was recently published in the Herald Citizen. A six-month report will be prepared later this year for the remaining area, and it will be included in the, next year's annual report. And I'll try to be really brief here, because the report has been published, and anybody has any comments can come by and, and review them. But to be succinct, police fire, solid waste collection and disposal, street maintenance, street signs, recreational facilities, planning, zoning, inspection services have been provided to all the areas as specified in the plan of services. So the other four areas that, where we still have remained to provide services include water, and the only areas that remain for water are the East Highway 70 Interstate 40 area, and all that remains to be done there is installation of one hydrant. The other is the West Cookeville Interstate 40 area, and in that area, we still have not purchased the Double Springs Utility District, which will, is necessary to serve a portion of the area, and also the southern portion of the area, which is served by the Bolt Dock Utility District. We have not yet acquired that area. Sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer has been provided to three of the areas, but does remain in several, remain to be completed in several areas, including the East Highway 70 area in which sewer has been partially extended into. The Old Bridge Road, Falling Water River, Buck Mountain, West Cookeville, and Shagrak old areas, sewer has not yet been, there's not been, not been any sewer installed in this area, nor for the Rebecca Place. All but the Rebecca Place specified they'll be done based on city policies. The Rebecca Place specifies 20 years. As for electrical service, we've provided streetlights in all of our annexation areas, but I think everybody's aware of the lawsuit with Upper Cumberland, and we have not yet been able to provide electric service to any of the annexation areas depicted on the screen. And the last category is natural gas. We only have two areas left where we need to do natural gas improvements, that includes the East Highway 70 area, which is south of I-40, and the plan of service has specified that it would be done within 10 years following annexation. So if we have any one service that's pressing in terms of completion, it would be natural gas to the southern area of that particular annexation area. The other area is the West Cookeville Interstate 40 area. We do have some natural gas provided out there, but there is an area south of I-40 that we have not yet provided, but the plan of services specifies it will be done when it's economically feasible, and it currently is not. I would anticipate that the completion of the Business Park would, that would coincide with the natural gas extension in that area. That is the plan of services report. If you have any questions, I'd like to try to answer them. And this is a public hearing, so if there's any, public has any comments.
When you said the pressing was on the East Highway 70 and Interstate 40, as far as the gas is concerned, is that something, when you say pressing, do you mean in...
Well, in terms of, we're going to, we're going to, we're approaching the timeframe that we said we would complete it by, specified in that particular plan of service. We had 10 years, and I believe that annexation was in 2001 or '02, so we have, we've got, you know, several more years, but of all the services specified, that's the one that's closest to coming up that we've not yet completed, and it's about five more, four or five more years we have to do that. And I think, and Mike's aware of this, and we've discussed... And I think, and Mike's aware of this, and we've discussed possible ways that can happen. This is, for, to be more specific, it's this area right in here.
Mr. Shipley, do we need any kind of motion to accept this report, or is this just a public hearing?
Just to ask if anybody has any...
No, you're just conducting a public hearing.
Please send a comment from the audience.
Yes, ma'am. If you could approach the lectern there, please.
My name is Martina Gabriel, and I'm with Alpine Lodge, which was annexed in 2001. And our understanding at that time was that we were able to save enough on utility bills and to offset, of course, the city taxes. Now it's 2008, we have not had any savings from the electric. The first year, we did receive no tax bill, so 2001, we did not pay taxes. Since 2002, including 2006, we have paid well over $44,000 in city taxes. And of course, soon 2007 is going to be due, so that pushes this over $50,000 that we paid on city taxes. In return, we did get immediately, of course, the water reduction rate, so that helped some, but that was a small amount compared to what we expected. The city, we are still at least paying $7,000 every year more than what we would pay when it comes to the city of Cookeville bill, especially with Upper Cumberland, you know, the customer charges are much higher, they have started to add the TVA fuel charges, that's quite an amount. Just on one of my bills, those TVA fuel charges amount over $150, and that's just one bill. I have 10 electric bills, so it's a huge amount that we are paying, and we are not getting anything. And I'm wondering, is there anything, any tax relief or anything at all that can be done? Because we're carrying the burden, but we don't get it. And that's just my request. I know with, with the gas, we're in the same situation, we're still paying like $2.10 for bottled gas per gallon, which we know the city rates are much high, much lower, so we need to get something in return. We got the city police protection, which Bob, Mr. Terry is doing an excellent job. Actually, we have a little bit too much city protection. Every time they come around, they circle our property, and some of our customers are beginning to wonder if we are in a high crime area. So that's, so after we explain that, they understand because they take that as a turnaround.
Yeah.
And of course, the fire department, we know, we had no problems before, the city always helped when something was needed, even though we were in a county, but we need to get something in return. And anything anybody can help. We have hired at one time a firm that had lowered our whole tax rate, including the Putnam County. It reduced it a little, but that was just a little drop in the hot water there.
Thank you, Ms. Gabriel. Mr. Shipley, if you could, I don't know if you or Mr. Rader want to address...
We have no provision to do that. I mean, that would be up to the city council to consider that.
We're basically tied in that lawsuit. I'm, I'm assuming that's what's keeping us from...
Are you aware of what they're communicating about? Yes, ma'am. Okay. We, we, on the other hand, also are paying an exorbitant amount of money to our blessed attorneys over there to try to get you your electric service, and so we're diligent about, about doing that, and so we'd love to provide those services to you. In some areas, we've requested that, but I also know that one of the areas that she's talking about as far as gas is the area that we just discussed, so if we can, you know, if we can help alleviate some of the costs associated with what she's spending in gas and look at that, sooner it would help her. But as far as tax relief, ma'am, I'm sorry, at this point, you know, we, there is no provision for that.
On, on kind of a different way to save money, I had a friend that recently visited India, and their hotel room there, when you went in with the little key card, you walked in and you put the key card in the slot, and all the power in the room came on. And then when you left, they take the key card out and all the power goes off. And it becomes, translates into a lot more savings, which means more profit for you because your, your consumers are not leaving on all their equipment.
...at one time, yes, I know what you're talking about.
Very good.
Let me say one thing, if we, if we've received more comments about anything in all the areas we've annexed, it's about electricity. It's a substantial savings from being inside the city.
Yeah, we're fine.
And I, and I do want to say that we have done, I don't know what else we can do to try to get the area. I do believe that state law says we can have the area, and that's, but we get this comment a lot, and that's, I do understand their concern.
Yeah, she's certainly not by her staff.
No.
Other people are having the problem, too, and we feel badly about that, but we're just keep working on it.
Thank you, though. Thank you for coming and making your comments. Or do we have any other, any, are there any further comments regarding the annexation plan of services? Seeing none, that brings us to our hearing of citizens and/or delegations. And does the council have any...
I would just like to tell you about some meeting that the Friends of the Museum had the, Tuesday, Monday night, last Monday night, and they gave some reports of, about the exhibits and what all is happening there. It's pretty exciting, but I just wanted to leave you with this one statistic. Since last May, when the museum opened, there has been over 3,000 visitors into that museum. So it has been well worth the money that has been placed into that facility, so I want to thank the staff for all the work that they have done in getting that museum, because the public certainly is enjoying it. And, and they continue to. I was there today, people were in there.
I think when we get the park completed over here, too, we'll have a lot more people that just migrate in there, it'd be nice.
And I recommend if, if somebody who's listening to this broadcast hasn't been to the museum, they need to go. It's really quiet, enjoyable, and I get a lot of comments about it, and I took my students there as a field, on a field trip, and they went to the depot and then walked down the street and went to the museum, and that was a very inexpensive, affordable field trip for students, and real impressive, because the students didn't realize how much history was right here in Cookeville, so...
Any further comments? Any comments from the audience? Seeing, seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting.
You just like hitting the gavel.